7:01, we called meeting to order. Mr. Dowdna, would you listen to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The records show this is where it is absent. All other board members are present. Mr. Board has public notice been given.
It has. We are working off of the revised agenda from September 20th, 2023, but the information in board docs reflects those changes.
On to public comments. If there is anyone wishing to address the board tonight, please take a moment to fill out the registration form prior to public comment being started. And per policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, the parent or the legal guardian of an enrolled district student or an enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must physically be present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotment of 30 minutes will be given for public comments. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. A translator may be used to translate verbal communication to the board. If such translation services are used, six minutes shall be given to that participant, with only the first three minutes being designated to the total time allotment. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. I have not been given any papers, so on to agenda M4. Reports, district administrators' report.
Okay, so a couple of things for the board and the public. First of all, next week is Board Appreciation Week. And so I want you personally and on behalf of our staff and community, thank the board members for your dedication and commitment to education and what you do for our community and certainly our school district. So, thank you. As a token of our appreciation, you do have some gifts Mrs. Steele had organized for you. Rain or shine, we think you are great board members and we want you to be aware of how gracious we are for everything that you do. You've also got yourself a mug and a cookie and a lanyard as well. And then also, I would say that the Partner School and the students at the Partner School have created this canvas for thanking board members as well, not only for the ability for that to exist, but again, for all that you do as board members. Thank you. Okay, to other items. Next week, we will also have a couple of committee meetings. We have our policy committee will be at 6 o'clock on October 5th. Our curriculum will follow. We're anticipating a 7:30 start for curriculum on October 5th. And then a couple of upcoming dates that will be going on. We will have our annual meeting on Monday, October 23rd at 6:30 PM. That's a different time than what our normally regularly scheduled meetings are, but those times are set at the previous annual meeting. And so the electors voted to have that start at 6:30. That'll be on the 23rd of October, and that will take place, or excuse me, replace our regularly scheduled board meeting on the 3rd, excuse me, the 4th Monday. And then finally, on the 5th Monday of the month, October 30th, we'll be the board will have a special meeting for the budget adoption and setting of the tax levy. That will be at our normal time of 7 o'clock. I believe that's it for announcements right now, because the board will be questioning the board members. Again, thank you for all you do. Sincerely.
Board member reports. Buildings, Property and Transportation met Thursday, September 21st. We met at the Partner School, so we have to do a tour. First topic we covered was the schedule at a glance, which you will hear each time that we come here. It's just a revolving kind of checklist of things that may come up or if we'd like to move things around. We discussed opening snow plowing bids. It's about the same time last year that we did that. The third thing was Mrs. Hardy presented something she'd like to do by planting a tree in honor of a retiring staff member. And my understanding is it's something that not only we're in favor of, but she's been in discussion with Mrs. Brown too, and likely up here at the high school in the future. But it would be a nice gesture for those on their way up. Fourth topic, Ms. Judd presented a discussion on possibly building a greenhouse and what grants might exist. And this was just a preliminary talk that we hope to start next year at the intermediate school. We approved two murals to be painted inside at the Partner School by the students to help them concentrate and express their kind of artistic expression. And then last topic was the actual visiting and touring of the school, which is, it's pretty neat to see. I've never been in there before, but it's gonna be really successful, I believe.
The Richardson School District Foundation met on the 18th. Primarily, the discussion revolved around the homecoming activities, including the outstanding alumni for 2023. Charles Welty is our lone outstanding alumni for this year. His sister Suzanne Semerotic will be accepting in his place as he lives out of state. With the parade lineup, we plan on having Mrs. Semerotic included in that. There will be a ceremony on the 29th, Friday the 29th, with social time starting at 5:45. The ceremony is at 7:00. And then, of course, the football game is at 7:00. And we will honor Mr. Welty at the halftime ceremony along with his family. And then we also discussed the new business. Just giving the foundation bylaws updated. Recollection of the previous members that it was presented in 1994, and it really hasn't been a whole lot done to it since. So there's a lot of outdated language as far as telecommunications and such. So we discussed a little bit the Cinderella with the Fall Musical, just some different opportunities possibly to help with getting better attendance at the show. So that will be, has been taken to the directors. And then we're also looking at the possibility of updating the Richardson School District Foundation logo and doing something similar to what was done with the Richardson Arts logo and adjusting that. And then with the Personnel Negotiation Committee, we met on Thursday, September 21st. Again, we did schedule at a glance, which just gives an overview and kind of projects out the workload over the course of the school year. We also talked about the meeting that was done with the staff, the meeting conference, to just have a discussion on where things are at with, from the administration side, but also to get feedback from those folks. Also had a second review of our first round of job descriptions. Mrs. Bingham is working on getting those finalized. And our community could present those to the board.
I believe that they're on for the October 11th meeting or 9th.
And then we also had got the second round of job descriptions. The ones we're working on now are 27 years old as far as when, how long ago the job descriptions were actually revised. And we discussed creating a rotation for being able to review job descriptions every year instead of having this whole big backlog. So we're making recommendations to the policy committee to have to be at least 12 job descriptions every year on a five-year rotation. So that should cover all the job descriptions that we have in the district. We also reviewed the draft budget with the few updates that we had. The September 15th was the final count, so there weren't a whole lot of changes to that. And then we also reviewed the OPAP benefits again and are making a recommendation to the policy committee about the timeline of taking care of any changes that we have coming forward.
Any questions for the board members? I'd also like to add too, I attended the family fun night last week at the Spark Farm. It was a lot of fun. The food service department had great food. It's a good crowd, the face painting, the pictures, the trails, the Boy Scouts. It was just a really warm welcoming atmosphere. It was a good time. So just want to thank the people that volunteered their time after hours to do that, especially the food service department. Their food was pretty darn good. Those barbecue pulled pork sandwiches were pretty good. So, again, thank you. On to minutes. Is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of September 11th, 2023?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Dowdna, discussion. Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
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 I'm staying.
Aye.
To agenda item 6, financial items, approval of statement of cash.
I move we approve the statement of cash dated September 19th, 2023.
Motion by Mr. Dowdna, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Traxel. Mr. Bosworth, do you have anything like to add?
Sure. On the statement of cash, cash on deposit, the community first, there's been a little activity and it's mainly due to we're kind of at the end of the fiscal year and we're making some final claims on grants and special education expenditures. As we make those claims, then that money gets sent to our school district.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? Ms. Traxel.
Aye.
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 It's approval of invoices.
I move we approve Community First Bank General Checking Account checks number 85600 through 85644 and ACH number 232400207 through 232400287 for a net total of $404,847.75. This is for the purpose of general operating cost of the district.
Is that 400 to 4,000 or 400 to 1,000?
My sheet says 404.
This one says 401.
404, 947.25. You had 404?
Yeah.
Yeah.
404.
404.
Thank you for verifying that. Motion was made by Mr. Dowdna, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Huntermer. Mr. Bosworth, anything you would like to add?
Couple of things to point out. On the second page of checks, check number 85618. You'll notice a couple of expenditures there. There's some Esser money that's going to be used to upgrade sound systems in our East Commons and our gymnasium. If you've ever been in either one of those, you know that those can be problematic. So it's a down payment in a sense. And you'll see some work done probably end of October or early November. Also, I would point out, the description there, the first word says Esser. So as you look through these expenditures, any of them begin with the word Esser, those are monies that the board designated for specific uses. And if we get to the ACH payments on page 3, about a third of the way down there, you can see there's an expenditure to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards for the annual renewal of board docs. So that's the software that we use now that has policies and logs all of our materials for our meetings. And then I think finally, if we go to page 5 on the ACH payments, about halfway down there, you'll see an expenditure for BL signs, softball, baseball field scoreboards. So that's a down payment of sorts for that work to begin. And we're hopeful that work will begin in the end of September or middle of October to have those scoreboards installed this fall. That's been a question of ours. So those, the wheels are in motion on that.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? Mr. Dowdna.
Aye.
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 Mrs. Steele, consent agenda items?
To accept the donation of money valued at approximately $1,000 from the Salvation Army. Accept the donation of items supporting Mrs. Rule's first-year teaching, first grade, on donorchoice.org, valued at approximately $341.76 from donorchoice.org. Accept the donation of a grant for a book machine and children's books from Shriver Foods. Accept the donation of macro bars from GoMacro LLC, valued approximately $750 from GoMacro. Accept the donation of various student classroom school supplies, valued approximately $80 from Simply Elegance. Accept the donation of various classroom materials, valued approximately $2,406 from donorchoice.org. Accept the donation of money valued approximately $750 from the Richland School District Foundation and approximately $700 from the Rotary Foundation of Richland County. Accept the Peter R. Marsh Foundation grant, valued at approximately $1,000 from the Peter R. Marsh Foundation and approve the MOU service agreement between the Richland School District and Parkhead Center for psychology services to allow counseling services for the 23-24 school year and to approve the monthly lease of two Chevy Traverse vehicles from Jones Chevrolet for up to three years as part of the CCLC program and grant. And that is it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Dowdna, discussion. Mr. Huntermer.
Aye.
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 Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Mr. Dowdna, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Nickman, discussion. Mrs. Nickman.
Aye.
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 Aye. On to agenda item 9, information and discussion items, district transfers and vacancies.
Okay, I know we have several reports tonight, so I'll try to keep this portion short. We do have a couple of openings in our support staff. We are still looking for one food server and one custodian. In our certified staff, we do still have an occupational therapist posted, a 60% art position posted, and a cross cat teacher at the intermediate school posted. All of those are open, but we do have a plan for each of those. If they don't get approved, the near future defense service will be open for a while. And then just a correction. The current PDF that is uploaded to board docs has this correction, but the speech position was originally posted as a 1.0 FTE. We were able to fill that, but only with a person who can work one day a week. Therefore, that is a 20% position, and the new PDF does reflect that. Any questions regarding transfers and vacancies?
Thank you. 9B, FFA presentation.
All right, so we have some folks from the FFA. They will be presenting tonight. They're only scheduled to appear on September 11th. That did not happen. There's no one, but the FFA is here this evening. So as soon as Miss Golden gets ready to go, we'll turn it over to them.
All right, so we're the Richland Center FFA. We're gonna talk to you about our past accomplishments and the 2023-2024 school year plans. So I'm the chief of program, I'm the president of the FFA this year.
I'm Jada Baker, I'm the secretary.
I'm Jaden Pacer, I'm the president of the department of education.
I'm Kate Argle, and I'm the treasurer.
Okay, so some of our old business that we have done this year are LDEs and CDEs, farmer lunches, plant sales, state convention, Ag Day, the primary and intermediate schools, Richland County Fair, and officer retreat.
For the LDEs and CDEs, Simone, Syrian, and Bryn can able both, they both went to sectionals. Simone went for a seminary speaking and prepared speaking. Bryn went for a creed speaking. They both moved down to state and got ranked in the top 10 of the state.
All right, so our farmer field lunches. Many of you probably heard about these. It was posted on Facebook a lot. So this year, we're gonna try to do a spring one and a fall one, so for spring plantings. Last year, we just did like a sandwich and a couple candy bars, string cheese, and some other goodies in the bag. And we just went out and found whatever farmers we could that were in the fields. And we just approached them. Sometimes it was kind of awkward because they were like, who are these people? And then, but some of them, they really liked it because like they were just out in the tractor all day and then they had someone to talk to. But it took a lot longer than what we had expected because they talked for... But it was lots of fun. So this year, we're gonna try to do two of them in the spring and the fall.
Yes. Our plant sale last year was very good. We do, uh, we sell, we plant all of our plants in the greenhouse, mostly in our agricultural classes. And then our FFA sells them and we make a very big profit off of them.
So one thing that we found like successful with the plant sale is that it brings in a lot of customers. And a couple, two years ago, we did like a bake sale with it along with like Pine River Smoke Company came in and we sold pulled pork. So, and then this year, all we did was a bake sale. Bake sale went over very well. So like, we just had some of the members just make like a pan of brownies and then we put them in bags and sold them. So that went really good. So we actually just put our plant sale order in. So they should be coming in here soon. And they're just little like buds that come. Otherwise, some of them are seeds, and that's how we get started. So state convention, there was quite a few of us that went. It was lots of fun. We went to a lot of different conferences and learned about different things that we're hopefully gonna use here this year in the chapter. But as you can see, yes, quite a few of us went. So we had Ms. Fettin and her husband as our escorts, and it was just a lot of fun, a lot of time to bond with the new members as well. So the Ag Day at the primary and intermediate school is an exciting event that celebrates agriculture and educates students about the importance of farming and rural life. It provides an opportunity for students to learn firsthand about various aspects of agriculture such as animal husbandry, crop cultivation, and sustainable farming practices. The event typically involves interactive demonstrations and workshops and exhibits where students can engage with farm animals, learn about different crops, and be in like a real tractor and see what it's like up there. Ag Day also serves as a platform to recognize and appreciate the efforts of farmers who work tirelessly to provide food and resources for our communities. It is a chance to foster a deeper understanding and appreciation for the agricultural sector and the vital role it plays in our daily lives. By exposing children to farming practices and rural life, Ag Day helps cultivate a sense of connection to the land and an understanding of where our food comes from. It is invaluable educational experience that instills the importance and values of sustainability, responsibility, and stewardship of the environment. So here coming up, we're hoping that we're gonna have another Ag Day this year at the intermediate primary school. We got a lot of hits on that. So as you can see up in the top right corner, we did a, like we planted a plant in a little cup so I could take them back to the classroom and watch those grow.
Oh, for the, for the Richland County Fair, Wyatt Banker, Haley Decker, Riley Banker, and Bryn Cradwell, they all showed in the fair for us. And then for fair cleanup, a lot of the members and officers, we came bright and early in the morning, at like 6:00 in the morning, every single morning of the fair. And we cleaned up all the garbage and picked up everything that we could in order to have it all cleaned for when the gates opened.
So every morning, we would go out and like clean the grandstands. It was nasty.
It was disgusting. It was messy.
But Wyatt, Haley, Riley, and Bryn, Bren, sorry, not Bryn, Bren, they all sold market steers at the fair. So that was pretty awesome. So they're actually getting income back from their animal that they've worked with all year. So our officer retreat. We went bowling this year after having a quick meeting in the ag room. That was a good time to bond. Most of us are in that picture, and I think it just helped us a lot because some of us are first-year officers, so they don't really know what it's like. So that helped a lot, I think. Definitely something that we're gonna do again in the upcoming years.
Our fall leader, I don't know.
Our new business is Fall Leadership Workshop at Southwest Tech. We're going here on October 2nd. So hopefully, that goes over well. So I think there's five, five of us going. So basically, Fall Leadership is where we all split into like our officer positions. So I'll go with all of the presidents that are in Section 4, and I'll just go and talk to them about like what's happening in our club and how we can improve in our chapter. And then like, Jada's the secretary. So Jada will go to the secretary station and they'll talk about how to write a secretary's report and improve on that. Just kind of so everybody puts their head together on what like what they think goes over best with their chapter to help everybody's chapter improve. Trunk or treat is something we want to get rolling on. We're really looking forward to it. We're looking into maybe having it at the community center parking lot and basically just where all the members and community members can come together and kind of get to know who we are and keep it kind of agriculture-based, but as a trunk or treat. National FFA convention, that is coming up on us real fast, too. So National Convention is in Indianapolis, something that we look forward to every year. It was lots of fun last year. It's a long bus ride with no legroom, but we get through that part. Last year, we got stuck in Chicago on the morning traffic, so that was awesome. And then we stopped at a bison farm. It was pouring down rain, so it was great. It was lots of fun. And then we went to like this zoo in Indianapolis and it was like you got to pet stingrays and stuff like that. So it was really cool to be able to see that kind of agriculture side. And then the actual convention was lots of fun. We learned a lot, bringing it back to the chapter for the ones that didn't go and keeping our meetings going smoothly. Farmer lunches, we kind of talked about that. Farmer lunches are hopefully gonna happen in the spring and the fall this year because we did not do them in the spring last year. We got lots of hits on it. And then we're gonna maybe like send out a sign up thing where like if you guys know any farmers, that we could get on that roster, that we could stop at that place, too, and hopefully grow it. Our fruit sale, we've seen a slide about that in the past, too. Basically, just everywhere, we make sales. And then a truck comes usually around Christmas, Thanksgiving time, and we disperse those sales. So it's kind of like a competition in between members to try to get the most sales. And then preparations for LDEs. So LDEs are what like Bryn and Simone competed in, and then you guys seen that big picture of all of us there. So LDE stands for leadership development, and then CDE stands for career development. So that's kind of something to get rolling here and have some more prep time. So hopefully, we'll have more go-to-state. We want to thank you guys for listening to us. And if you have any questions, please be sure to reach out. We'd love to talk to you guys and hear from you. We hope... We hope to see you at some of our upcoming events. And we want to thank you from the Richland Center FFA.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Great job on your presentation, first of all. Your date at Southwest Tech on October 2nd, is that during the school day or in the evening?
So we're only at like 2:15, and we'll get back later that evening. So it'll be kind of just like towards the end of day type of thing.
Lacey, I have a question. When are you, what date are you looking to do your trunk or treat?
So we're not really sure yet because the one at the primary school is around the time that we're looking at. So we're looking to do maybe the day before or a couple days before. Or the day after.
We're doing the day after your graduates.
Yeah, we're going to try to keep it so they're not like right on top of each other and not at the same time, but kind of, so there's more going on.
Nothing stands don't quite yet.
Well, great job by everyone.
Do you have any other questions?
On your plant sale, when do you guys start planning for that? How do you pick the varieties that you're going to grow for that?
So actually, we never know what to order. So we just kind of click buttons, and whatever comes, comes. And then we plant them and try to make like baskets out of them. So sometimes, we have some pretty wimpy baskets, and sometimes, they look really good. So we never really know, but like we kind of look at what sells better than what doesn't. So like last year, our veggies were terrible. We couldn't keep them alive. So that's probably not something we're going to do this year. We're going to look more towards the flowers and like the hanging baskets and deck pots because those ones weren't really good.
Last year, we also sold, we also sold pavers and...
Yeah, we had some bricks that were down in the FFA, like I mean agriculture shed that were like donated to us, so we tried selling those. And we sold quite a few of them. So that went good for people to like put around the outside of their garden. Do you have any other questions?
Just a request. When you guys do the fruit sale, could you do a district line email on that?
Yeah. Is there any way we could like put like a, one of the sheets in like the district office or something? Would you guys be able to see that there?
We can definitely help you with that if we work with high school administration or down at district office.
Okay.
I could send it out.
I know before that we, some members would walk into the district office and ask firsthand if anyone wanted to buy anything. We've done that a couple times.
But we'll try to get something out there more where like if you guys are just swinging in for something, you'll see it sitting there. Then you could just leave money in an envelope or something. But if you guys have another way of doing that, please let us know.
We're open to suggestions.
Any other questions? All right. Well, if you guys have anything else to ask us or add, just let us know. You can either email Ms. Fettin or any of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 2 to the ninth seed curriculum progress presentation.
Okay. So part of our policy 2210, which is curriculum development, part of that policy states that either the district administrator or the curriculum director should make progress reports to the board periodic times. This is an opportunity. And one of the nice things about our new policies is that it keeps administration on task with making sure the board's informed of these things. So tonight, Dr. Sherri Johnson will present a kind of this progress report on the district's curriculum development. Dr. Johnson, whenever you are...
Good evening. I did do a big presentation primarily because the star of the show is what you have in your packet. It is essentially the seven-year curriculum review and renew cycle. So essentially, you'll notice, I'm not sure which page it's on, it would be in your packet.
Page 16.
Thank you. And you'll see on there where we have down the left side, it talks about what happens in each year of the seven-year cycle. So we take it seriously to initiate conversations early. We don't just say, oh, we get money this year, let's buy stuff. We try to kind of plant seeds and get people and departments aligned with what they're teaching. And as they're looking at those things, then they can see if the curriculum or the textbooks they currently have meet those state standards and the alignment that they're looking for. A majority of the time after seven years, it doesn't align as well as we'd like it to as people's content areas grow and improve. So that way, they're able to look at renewing and adopting new resources to support what they're doing. So for example, this year, what we're looking at is elementary ELA, which is English Language Arts and High School Science. So so far this year, we've, kind of an interesting story. So our elementary ELA, we were talking about it last year and even the year prior, but last year especially saying, okay, so we're supposed to be kind of getting things aligned and figuring ourselves out. And so in the process, the state of Wisconsin, and actually nationally, there's been a huge movement in reading instruction. And so they were talking about, you might have heard people talking about the science of reading. And it's really the science of how students learn to read. So when, we used to hear about people having dyslexia, and the way that they were taught was this special, particular way, and that's what helps those students learn to read. Well, we've come to find out, that process is good for everyone. So they kind of called it the science of reading. And so they are, the federal and state governments are looking to move in this direction. So we've been talking about this for a while, and in getting prepared for it, we've been training teachers in the elementary buildings to be able to teach in this manner so that they have the strategies and tools that they need. And then now it's just more finding the resources to support this learning. Now, we still have quite a few staff that are not trained yet, but I'm kind of waiting to hear from the state. Last year, they supported that training with $4,000. So we used that like within a minute and got people trained. And we're waiting for more funding. And actually, there's, this summer, they passed, what was the assembly bill? 321 is now Wisconsin's Act 20. And so it's talking about all of the things that they hope to do. You know, they say they're putting money behind it, and so I'm waiting and hoping that that's truly going to happen. Because there's a lot of big things that need to happen for ELA adoption. So that's kind of where we're at with that. Last year, we kind of been, we've been kind of waiting to see what's going to happen as far as what the state's going to support. So this year, we are piloting for ELA, and we already purchased for science, like I said. And then if you look at next year, so it's in the 2324 column where it says one needs assessment and planning. So tech ed, business, elementary, science, and middle school math are taking a look at what their resources are doing for them and how it's aligned to the state standards. And then the ones after that, so face, ag, computer science, and elementary math are essentially making their list, like what do we want? Like it's where the rubber meets the road. Essentially, elementary math is piloting this year also. So if you've heard any feedback from our elementary staff, they are working magic truly by doing all these pilots all in one year. So we will be adopting ELA this year and math next year. So it's been a big, a big lift for them. No teacher is piloting more than one thing, but there's a lot of pilots happening. So our building leaders here are supporting a lot of things in their buildings. And so shout out to you, I appreciate you. But in that process, it's kind of showing you all the work that goes into deciding on what's best for students and how they best learn. So the schedule kind of lays some of those pieces out. The things that we adopted last year and years prior to that are also like they're on this big matrix. If there are people who can't see this. And so essentially, they should be looking at evaluating what their resource is doing for them and how it's meeting the needs of our students. When I presented this to the curriculum committee, we kind of talked to all about all the resources, and truly, we're an open book here. So if you have any questions about things as far as what we purchased, why we purchase things, how we go about this process, I'd love to chat with you about it or share more information. But does anybody have any questions about our renewal and reuse cycle?
I guess my question is, there's always bumps in the road, right? So when you're moving from year one to whatever the year is to the following year, and there's hiccups like implementing the elementary ELA curriculum, how does that then get addressed to the following year to make sure that you stay on track and continue to test?
Well, we have some excellent building leaders. We have instructional coaches, math and ELA for the most part, that are district-wide. And then in this building now, we have some coaches that are going to help with some of those pieces. But it's really collecting feedback and talking to people. I try to have a lot of those conversations. But most of those things, those pickups, are around training. So when we have so much staff turnover, that means we have to bring trainers back in every year so this resource doesn't go, like, we do have a department that we just adopted a whole bunch of resources, and almost every person in the department is brand-new. So we're training them this year, and hopefully, they stay for the next, you know, six years so that the training is not for nothing. But it's also good for current people who don't leave to get retrained because you all, you all learned something new before. It's super overwhelming when you're trying to first think of what the first day looks like with that curriculum, let alone how am I supposed to use this long-term or the bigger-picture pieces? That, they usually fill resources with too much stuff to make sure we have enough. But it can, by design, cause failure, shut down by staff and where they have to pick and choose sometimes. So revisiting some of those pieces is, I'm definitely not about, I'm sorry. But really, training is the biggest part of this. Any other questions?
When we get something new, how do you assess the success or failure? If there needs to be changes, how do you look at that?
Well, staff is a huge key for that, but we do have data that we look at. So state testing and any other like unit tests that we have that are more formative. And that all feeds into what it is we need. But like as a state, we have more ACT prep kind of things. Yes, we do have Wisconsin state standards, but we use the ACT test as our state test. So making sure that we understand that's the, that's the same standard, but they're worded a little differently to the Wisconsin state science standards. They're like an GSS type of thing. It all kind of intertwines. I'm picturing science just because that's the newest adoption, so I guess that's what I'm connecting it to. And what I'll expect and what we'll be a part of is study conversations as a team, meeting regularly, trying to figure out what they need, what I need, to make sure that when we look at our data, that we aren't having big holes. And here, we have a new resource adoption, like last year, we adopted high school math. And the state, state information came back, and I'm kind of examining it, and I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, like why aren't there huge growths? We've got a new resource. Well, data says that it can take over a year for staff to feel comfortable and students to understand the processes that are involved in a new curriculum. Math, you know, can be taught in different ways. It's not always the same trick or way. So we have a lot of avenues, but it's really the staff and me having conversations and the state have. I promise I won't make my next answer that long. If you want to ask more questions, I will admit, I promise.
Spreadsheets are your, spreadsheets are your jam.
I do. I'm working on learning more about them, but yeah, I'm...
I imagine you enjoy the color coding and whatnot.
Yeah, right. I do. There's just so much about them that you just can't even understand. I watched Steve work a bunch of magic as we were trying to do some of that student mapping, and wow, I have a lot to learn. I'll turn my microphone on now.
Thank you. Right, 9D, 2023-24, goals and priorities update.
Okay. So the Curriculum Assessment and Public Relations Committee had asked that this goals and priorities update be placed on the second meeting of the month, every month, so that the board was fully aware of, and our public was fully aware of what was going on as it relates to these three priorities. Of course, there'll be more work done at committee levels as well. So just to kind of give you a quick overview of where we're at with the three. Priority number one is the one we've made the most work on up to this point. Our staff during In-Service Week did student mapping, which means that our staff went through every single student in their buildings, and they identified whether or not, I'm paraphrasing here a little bit, whether they didn't know the student, whether they knew the student by name, or maybe had heard of the student, or whether they had a connection with that student, right? And so that allowed us to get some good data on which students might be missing that connection with adults. And as we looked at some of that initial data, we found that some students truly didn't have connections. Others had very logical explanations. They moved in at the end of last year. It was a new teacher, and therefore, they hadn't had a chance to make those connections. Maybe it was a foreign exchange student, those kinds of things. But then, the second part of that is that over the course of the next week, I believe some buildings are doing it this week, others early next week, we are going to be doing the same thing with our students. Our students will be doing a staff mapping. And they will basically be going through every staff member, not just teachers, but support staff, all of our administration, all of our district office, food service, IT, maintenance, custodial, et cetera, everybody that is in their buildings. And the students will be determining, I don't know who that teacher is. I know who they are, but I don't necessarily feel comfortable talking to them, or I feel very comfortable talking to them. Getting that data is going to help us really look at both sets and determine which students are we just missing? Which students need a better connection with an adult? And that will allow us to be very proactive early in the school year and try to bridge that gap. The second component to that student mapping that will be going on is that we will also be asking students, not specifics in terms of names, but you know, do you have a good friend in your building? Yes or no? Do you have a good friend in another building? Maybe that's another building in our district or another building in another district. Yes or no? And do you have a good friend in the community? Yes or no? That will also help us gather which students don't have good friends. And we know that if students have a good connection with an adult and they have friends, okay, they're more likely to come to school, it'll be a positive experience. And if we can get them here, they have a higher rate of not only being successful academically, but a higher rate of being successful in life and not engage in some of these other activities that we are trying to prevent. So we feel that that, those two things right there are going to really start to give us some good data. Priority one, goal, both of those two goals. Priority two is in the planning stages. We are working administratively right now to really figure out, what does this look like? How are we going to go about collecting the data? And then we'll be relaying that information to the board and to the staff as well to be able to ensure that every staff member has a sense of community and define what that is. Before we can get that information, we have to really determine how are we going to do that. So that's where we're at right now with priority two. And then priority three is similar. We've made a little bit of progress with that. We're working through the stages of how do we determine what kind of data are we looking to collect from these 250 past graduates? But then also working with the community to define career-ready and employability skills. I had a conversation with Ashley Westerfeld, one of our CTE teachers up here at our face program. And she told me that two years ago, the CTE program had already had collected data from our community on what they were looking for from our graduates in terms of career-ready and employability skills. So she's giving me that information. We're going to examine that and see, does that, do we have additional questions that we have need answered and holes in that data? Or do we have enough data to really start to work with defining what career-ready and employability skills mean? So that's where we're at with that. All of these priorities are still in the early stages. We're kind of in the data collection and planning stage, but I wanted to make sure the board knew that we were working on all six of these goals and all three of these priorities and see what questions you might have regarding that. So what questions do you have regarding any of those or all of those?
For the first priority, if you, when, if, yeah, you find that, those gaps where there's the faculty and staff feel that they have a good connection with a particular student, but those students don't feel that same way towards that teacher, what kind of training or programs do you have in mind to help address that dissonance?
Yeah, that's a great question. And why I'm not avoiding, avoiding because I want to avoid it, but simply because I don't know the answer at this point. I think that with all of these priorities, this first time around, getting baseline data and really understanding what we're dealing with will really be a leading factor in what our next steps are. If we find that there are three or four students at each building, that will be an entirely different conversation than if we find there are 20 students at each building. And so I think once we get that, I'll be able to better answer that. But I just don't have a great sense because it can go in so many different directions at this point. I'm sorry.
To 9E, seclusion and restraint report.
Okay, so I'm going to do my best to explain this and then I'm going to ask Mr. Josem if I've locked anything out. And then between the two of us, we should be able to answer any questions that the board has. By state statutes, we have to report to the board each year on our previous year's seclusion and restraints. And in the public content and board docs and then in the PDF that is included as well, it's the same information. It defines what seclusion is, you know, keeping students apart from other students in a room or an area from which they are physically prevented from leaving, okay? We are secluding them intentionally. In addition to defining what restraint is, and restraint is where we have to, you know, immobilize or reduce the abilities, students' ability to freely move, okay? And so we have to monitor that and our administration does a great job of collecting the data for this and filing the, excuse me, logging and documenting the correct information in Skyward. And then by state statute, we have to report that to the board. Oftentimes, many of the situations can be identifiable information. And so we have to be very vague in the information that we release, okay? So I can tell you that during the last school year, the 2223 school year, we had six seclusions that we had reported across the district and we had 11 restraints across the district. All of those were special education students. All of them were intervened by trained staff. They were all handled appropriately. I don't think anything was done inappropriately. But I can't probably go into a lot of specifics regarding that because I know that we do have some identifiable information that would be released there. But I do want to report that we did have six seclusions and 11 restraints. And before you ask any questions, I'm going to see, Mr. Josem, did I leave anything out that you want to add that might answer a question?
The only thing I would add is, I mean, by law, we're supposed to have one person trained in each building. And historically, we've done an excellent job. Usually, all of our admins are trained, I would say probably at least five to 10 additional staff in each building are trained. Several years ago, Amy Hardy was our in-district trainer and that is now going to be Ryan. But I would encourage the board to come down and kind of watch that, the physical part. Because quite often you see on the news, especially the bigger districts, where you see students being dragged down the hallway or taken down to the ground, you know, face-first. And we don't do any of that. All of our staff are, have gone through non-run crisis intervention training. So as far as a special director, I'm very confident in our admin and our staff being properly trained to handle these situations. And, and it doesn't happen all the time, but it happens when either the student is their safety or the safety of others we have to entertain. That's what I'd add.
Couldn't the example of restraint be something as simple as aiding a hand off of a doorknob because they refused to let it go, for example?
It wouldn't meet the definition of restraint. We would, we would do that.
I just didn't know kind of what, to what extent is considered restraint.
Yep. And like for seclusion, we quite often have like cool-down rooms. Again, we can't lock the doors. The doors can't have locks on them. We can close the door to help the student kind of calm down, but we cannot like hold the door closed indefinitely. All of these are timed. Quite often, seclusions last, you know, a few seconds. The restraints last a few seconds. But as far as DPI, we have to talk about this every year, this school board in October, and then file a report to DPI in December.
How will our CRO be involved moving forward with these types of events?
That's a good question, since we haven't had one before. I would imagine that he would be involved. Obviously, the police go through their own training, much higher level than what we do. When it comes to that, there is a special report that we have to file whenever police are involved. So I'd imagine if he's here or in the building, respective buildings where it happens, he would probably be involved.
Quick, quick clarifying question. You said if all staff is trained in that.
Not all staff. It'd be wonderful if all staff did, but by law, we're supposed to have one person each building. I would say district-wide, we'd probably have 35 to 40.
Okay.
But we encourage as many staff that want to get trained to get trained in.
Thank you. Again, to 10, 10A, special education staffing changes 2023-24. My apologies. We're still on agenda 9, information and discussion items. So 9F is policy 3112.01, organizational chart, first reading.
Okay, and this was the item that got changed in the revision, the, of the agenda that came out on September 20th. This doesn't need action because it is just the, the first read. So just to give the board a little background on why you're looking at this, we knew that there would be a few hiccups with Niola. There would be some policies that needed to be updated, some that may have gotten missed. Policy 204, our old policy 204, which was emergency chain of command, was a policy that the district had, a local policy, that outlined who would be in charge of the district in the case of an emergency. If someone were, if, if the district administrator were incapacitated and unable to do their job in the case of an emergency. We're not talking planned absences, right? Who would be in charge? How would that look? And what happens if the next person is incapacitated, if we really had a true emergency? That policy did not get added into Niola when we adopted the resolution that took effect on July 1. And instead, the policies that Niola have reference organizational charts. An organizational chart is the same type of thing instead of listing each one in policy. It's more of a chart that shows who reports to whom and who would be in charge in terms of a hierarchy. And so policy 1100.01 is the actual number that this policy will be for Niola. And so in a moment here, Mr. Amihon will, will read that policy. So this will be the first reading. And then there's a PDF that is attached to it that will be available for the public. Once this is adopted, it's in the board book as well, available to the public. It shows the organizational chart for the district, a very high level. Board of Education is at the top. The district administrator follows, followed by various levels of the administrative team. And that policy, excuse me, that chart is read top-down, left to right. So if I were becoming incapacitated, then we would look at the green boxes, level two, and we would read that left to right, starting with the business official, director of spec ad and so on. After level two is, is used up, then we move down to level three. Again, top-down, starting with the activities director, and then left to right, starting with the HR director and so on. So that's kind of how you would read that chart in the case of an emergency. Okay, so now let me talk a little bit about the procedures on how the board will go about adopting a new policy because this wasn't adopted with this resolution that all of our policies, current policies are under. So in black there, policy 0131.01 is our bylaws and policies. And I've taken a little excerpt from that that states how new policies shall be approved. And they must happen over the course of at least two regular scheduled, special meetings of board, this being the first one. First, we have to announce it and we have to talk about the proposed new policies. That's what we're going to do tonight. Then there, it says that there shall be an opportunity for those concerned groups or individuals to react to it. So at our, if the board is okay with the first reading of it, and there are no major revisions to it, then at the October 9th board meeting, we will have a special agenda item prior to or right after the public comment. There will be a public comment specific to allowing people to react to this policy, okay? Likely will be before public comment. Mr. Amihon and I will talk about the sequence of that. But likely before, people will have a chance to react to it. That can be anybody who wants to talk about this policy and the revisions and the proposal that's, that's being talked about. The board would then hear all of that information. They may be ready to act on it later on, on October 9th board meeting and adopt the policy. They may hear enough information that raises questions and they may need to send that back to policy committee and start the process over again. They may say, we're going to wait on it one more board meeting and we'll, we'll bring it back for the next board meeting and vote on it at that point. It just requires at least two. Tonight will be the first. The informational part will be on October 9. And then at any point after that, the board will be able to act on that policy. And it will jump through any hoops that it needs to in terms of revisions or changes or alterations to it. But this is a fairly straightforward policy. It does replace what we used to have as our emergency chain of command. But this is the general process that we would have in, in having any new policy from this point forward. So before I turn over to Mr. Amihon to read the policy, do you have any questions on the procedure on how policies are adopted? Okay, and Mr. Amihon, I'll turn it over to you to read the first reading of the employee organizational chart, policy 1100.01.
So policy 1100.01 states that if an emergency occurs in a school district while the district administrator is absent from the district or incapacitated, the organizational chart shall be used to determine who is in charge of the district. In determining this flow, the chart shall be read starting at level one, followed by level two, left to right, followed by level three, top to bottom, then left to right. The district administrator may appoint an administrator prior to his or her absence with the rest of the chain of command, following an order as previously indicated within the organizational chart.
Any questions, comments from the board that?
The mention of left to right, it seems pretty clear as to what each individual, who they would oversee and be responsible for. But am I to assume then, if it goes left to right, that the direct next in line then becomes the business official? Or is it, do you then go down that tree branch to where Mr. Bosworth has this delegation? The high school administrative team has their, so we have four chiefs at the same time.
No, I, I follow you. It's a great question. So if I were to become incapacitated in an emergency, then we would look at that, that green level, which includes a business official, director of spec ad, director of instruction, the building principals. And we would read those left to right. So Mr. Bosworth as a business official would be the one in charge. If he were also become incapacitated, then it would move over to the director of spec ad. It would not move down until all of the green boxes were.
And just one clarification for the level three being top to bottom, then left to right? Because the, if you look under the building principal, the next in line after all three, all four of those, pardon me, of the green boxes would then go to the RCHS assistant principal and activity director? If that, if all of those folks are then incapacitated, then it moves down to the human resources level and then moves left to right from there. Just as a kind of clarification.
And I just have a quick clarifying point as well. So if I read it correctly, if you have a planned absence and put someone in charge, you don't have to follow this flow chart. You can jump to any place you want.
Correct, but if something were to happen during that time, then the chart would take over. So if I'm at a state convention, I say John is in charge of the district. If he were to become incapacitated, it would follow from there. If I said Sean was in charge and he became incapacitated, it would revert back to John and then follow.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions?
I hope we never have to use it, but we need it at least to use.
On to agenda 10, action items, special education staffing changes 2023-24.
Okay, so in order to meet some students' IEP needs and be able to meet some of our special education needs, we are looking to increase some staffing through some overload positions. Essentially, we would have 1.34 overloads. Overload, one overload is the equivalent to a teacher teaching an additional course for the whole year, okay? One course being a 45-minute block. So in the course of a block, if they're teaching a full block additionally during their prep in quarters one and three, that's the equivalent of a mental overload, okay? Because they're doubling up on those 90-minute block, or excuse me, those 45-minute periods in a 90-minute block. Does that make sense when I'm talking about it? So 1.34 is actually, nobody would be getting a full overload. It would actually be three different people who would be getting 54% of an overload and then 40% and then 60% of overload. I believe that they, they are 0.4, 0.4 and 0.53 are the actual numbers. And then in addition to that, in the past, our, our support staff at the high school level have been working seven hours. And we are requesting that we bump that up to seven and a quarter hours for those six support staff. With the high school's starting times moving from 8:10 to 3:20 to now 7:55 to 3:55, we've added the 15 minutes and we just can't quite meet all of those needs for, for our, our students. And so we're asking for an additional quarter hour per day for those, for those folks. Total estimated budgetary impact is approximately just under $20,000. There is some additional information, executive content for the board as well, some identifiable information. But do you have any questions on that?
Any questions from the board? All right. Is there a motion then to approve the request for up to 1.34 overload positions and to increase the schedules of six special education support staff positions from seven to 7.25 hours per day to meet special education requirements for the 2023-24 school year?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Troxell. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Aye.
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 To 10B, policy 8500.01 revision.
Okay, so in August, the board had approved a revision of policy 8500, food service, which included some language on how the district would handle negative family accounts. Policy 8500.01 had language that mirrored the old policy 8500. And so the recommendation now from the policy committee is we need to make sure that we have consistent language in both of our policies. And so the proposed language mirrors what our old policy 8500 has, or what our, what the current policy 8500 has. Total side note, John and I met with the folks from Niola regarding policies last week. And these two policies were policies that Niola is actually. and these two policies were policies that Neola is actually thinking about and likely will be merging together in the near future because the language does mirror each other so closely. That will probably come at a later, at a later date, perhaps the January update, perhaps next year, but we do need to make sure that they mirror each other, so that's what Policy 8500.01 pertains to.
Is there any questions for Mr. Board? Is there a motion then to approve revising Policy 8500.01, student meal fee collection as presented, effective immediately? Motion, Mr. Belling, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman, discussion. Mr. Belling.
Aye.
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 Aye. I'll make a motion, we move into closed session pursuant under Statutes 19.851C and/or F, as appropriate, to consider employment, promotion, and compensation of employees for purposes of discussing individual employee hiring and compensation, and Wisconsin Statutes 19.851F, and Wisconsin Statutes 118.125, to discuss student enrollment applications and individual pupil information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed session, if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Belling, discussion. Ms. Troxell?
Aye.
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 Aye.